I'd like to call this village board meeting of February 7th, 2019, to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritato?
Yeah.
Trustee Pujak?
Excused.
Trustee Schroeder?
Excused. Would you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Schmidt, would you like to start us off, please?
It would be my pleasure, Mayor, thank you.
Wait a minute. Is my thing first or last?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mayor. Join us Saturday, March 2nd, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon for coffee with the mayor and village board. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the mayor or village board, please call the mayor's office anytime at (630) 909-5303. Register today for the mother and son dance. Moms, put on your dancing shoes, and boys, come show off your best dance moves as we have a night in Paris. Enjoy an activity-filled evening complete with dinner and dessert. The dance is Saturday, February 23rd, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. at the Center for Senior Citizens. Please register by February 16th. The registration fee is $55 for residents, $65 for non-residents, and $26 for each additional son. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Schmidt. Trustee Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Join the Center for Senior Citizens on a trip to Drury Lane to see Mamma Mia. We will be going to the 1:30 p.m. show on Thursday, March 14th. This internationally acclaimed musical tells the story of marriage, family, and finding where you belong. Don't miss your chance to see this hit Broadway musical. Please register by Friday, February 15th. For more information, please contact the Center for Senior Citizens at (630) 260-6050. Stop by Glendale Lakes Golf Club on Friday, March 8th, and Friday, April 19th, for a meal you will never forget. The Glendale Lakes Golf Club will be featuring their fish fry for two nights only, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Try some great food at a great price. Enjoy our all-you-can-eat fish fry, soup, and salad bar, or order appetizers and other items off our new menu. Call (630) 260-0095 to make a reservation today. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
You're welcome. Trustee Light?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Glendale Heights Police Department is asking residents to check on their relatives and friends to assure they are not in need of assistance in extreme weather conditions. Glendale Heights has a warming shelter in place and is ready to assist the needs of our residents. For more information, follow the police department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. As a reminder, in any emergency, you should always dial (911) for immediate assistance. During periods of extreme weather, the police department will activate its senior call list to check on senior citizens. Seniors or their family members may ask to be placed on this list by picking up a form at the Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens, or contacting the police department's community outreach specialist at (630) 909-5459, or the Center for Senior Citizens at (630) On Thursdays through April 11th, the Center for Senior Citizens is partnering with AARP to host the AARP Tax Aid Program. This is a free service that can answer most of your tax questions and help you file your 2018 taxes. AARP Tax Aid is the nation's largest volunteer-run tax assistance and preparation service. Appointments will be held on Thursdays between 9:00 a.m. and noon. Please call (630) 260-6050 to schedule an appointment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Clerk Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
As a reminder to residents, please do not shovel, snowblow, or plow any snow onto village streets. This will help ensure our streets are clean and clear of any snow for safe driving. If you have any questions, please call the police department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie.
Trustee Maritato?
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Now, you look into marketing your business in Glendale Heights. Consider the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce. The Glendale Heights Chamber meets for a monthly luncheon on the first Wednesday of each month from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Network with other businesses, learn about different events in the community, and market and grow your organization. For more information on joining the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce, please email The police department would like to remind residents of the parking regulations within the village's snowfall. There is no parking allowed on village streets designated as a snow route for 24 hours after a snowfall of one inch or more. There is no parking allowed on any village street for 24 hours after a snowfall of two inches or more. And there is no parking allowed on any village street for 72 hours after a snowfall of five inches or more. If you have any questions regarding winter parking restrictions, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department, non-emergency number, at (630) 260-6070. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. This last week in January, we were met with extreme weather conditions that affected many people in Glendale Heights and all throughout the Midwest. Residents all over the area were taking shelter as we were met with a historic winter freeze that closed down many schools and businesses. I want to personally thank all of our residents for their efforts in checking on loved ones and neighbors and working together through such a difficult winter season. I also want to thank our hard-working Parks, Recreation, and Facilities Department and Public Works Department for braving the cold weather to make sure our facilities and warming shelters were up and running for those in need while still attending to other emergencies that arose during this week. And to the Water and Sewer Division for braving the record cold to fix our many broken water mains. I also want to thank our police department and other emergency services for ensuring our residents were safe and assisting those who were in need. Lastly, I want to thank all of our residents who took the time to call, post on social media, or send us an email thanking our crews. Please know that we send these kudos back to our employees who worked long hours to ensure our safety. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work and professionalism during this historic cold winter. You guys all deserve a hand. Wonderful. Okay, we have two proclamations for this month. The first one being a proclamation to proclaim the month of February as American Heart Month. And the second one is a proclamation to proclaim the month of February as National Salute to Veteran Patients. So if there are no objections, I will sign the proclamations.
Go, please.
Go for it.
Okay, thank you. Nicole, this looks like you.
So, to go along with the proclamation, I would like to thank many organizations, residents, businesses throughout our community and beyond for continuing to participate in Valentines for Veterans. The program has been a part of our community for over 20 years, and we continue to grow every year. I wanted to give a particular thank you to our gentlemen of the VFW who came to the Center for Senior Citizens to help us sort all of the cards, along with volunteers from ID Commerce and Logistics and members of our Center for Senior Citizens. Just a few of the notes that I received along with Valentines came from Glen Bar District 87, the Glendale Heights Junior Women's Club, our Sports Hub preschool program and Path After School program, St. Matthews School in Parish, Glenside Middle School, Mark Court School District 15, Saint Isadora School, and many Troops, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, and Brownies. So, with that being said, if you, Mayor and Village Board, wouldn't mind reading a few Valentines that we received, that would be great.
Want to start at your end?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay.
No, you should start at this end.
Yeah.
Okay, this one says, "Happy Valentine's Day." Says, "Happy Valentine's Day. You are stronger than you believe, smarter than you think, and love more than you know. God bless America." From Gabriella. There you go.
Your turn, Marie.
This is decorated with hearts all over, and it says, "Thank you to all veterans. Thankful for all your service. Appreciate everything you do. Happy Valentine's Day."
Mine says, "Happy Valentine's Day." It says, "Dear veteran, thank you for all you have done. You risked your life for us, and you fought for your country. Happy Valentine's Day again." From Tara.
Mine is, "Happy Valentine's Day to the veterans. Dear veterans, thank you for serving our country. You helped so many people by protecting us. You're doing a great job. Keep it up, and good work. We thank you so much. Sincerely, Justin."
Thanks.
Mine is a very nicely detailed pen drawing with some beautiful flowers on the front of it, and it says, "Happy Valentine's Day," with a great big heart at the end of it. It says, "Thank you for your service. We appreciate all you've done for our safety. Happy Valentine's Day." It wasn't signed by anyone, but they did a really nice job on that.
That is nice.
Mine says, "Happy Valentine's Day," from Daniela, and it says, "Dear veterans, thank you for all you have done. You risked your life for us, and you fought for this country." And there's a bunch of hearts in there. It's really pretty.
Mine is decorated on the front with hearts, and then there's a nice little pop-up of an American flag on the inside, which says, "God bless the USA. Happy Valentine's Day. I'm so thankful that you were brave enough to defend our country. If you weren't here, then our country wouldn't be the same. Thank you so much for serving our country. Love, Sarah." Excellent job, Sarah. Thank you.
So, thank you to our veterans, and thank you to those who continue to support our Valentines for Veterans program.
Thank you, Nicole, for doing a great job once again, and a thank you to everyone out there that participated in this very, very important program. Thanks. Now, Bob, it's your turn. This is Bob Vargas from Post 2377. And Rich, right?
Yes.
Do you want to go stand with him, or you want to stay there? Oh, perfect.
He's the garden angel.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Here, Jackson.
Hi.
Evening. Trustees, leaders of our village, thank you very much for having us tonight at this Valentine's Board meeting. As you may know, Rich Osborne and myself are members of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post here in town. And, but, tonight, we're not alone. With us are three wonderful students from St. Matthew's School. And the essays, well, they're essays, but they're really Valentines that will be read for you tonight, and they're not only for veterans, they're for everyone. I think you're gonna, when you hear them, you're gonna agree with me. And the three students are Rose Anthony, Kayden Lee, and Sin Coyle. Before they come forth and they read them for you, let me describe a little bit about the program that the VFW does and that they got involved with. Now, St. Matthew participates in this, and they issued to our post 53 essays written for this program called the Patriots Pen Essay Contest. Okay, out of 53, these were chosen as the top best, and were issued for our district competition. And there's 26 posts in the district. Lots and lots of essays are written for this program. 2,200 rings a bell. So, at this district competition, now, there wasn't 2,200 to be judged from, there was about 30 that made the final ends. All right? The essays are for sixth and seventh and eighth grade students to write a 300-to-400-word essay on a given subject or topic. This year's topic for 2018-19 is, "Why I Honor the American Flag." That's what you're gonna be hearing. Okay, now, let's see, the winners from our post, and they were submitted for district for further competition. And why don't we listen now to Rose Anthony, as she expresses why she honors the American flag? Come on up, Rose.
Why I Honor the American Flag. I honor our magnificent flag because it represents our country's freedom that we have fought for multiple times. Many people have died representing the American flag, and we have the privilege to respect it. When we hear the national anthem, we should stand with pride and remember all those who suffered for our country. When we remember the flag, we should pay particular attention to what unites America and not focus on what divides us. When we stand with our hearts over, with our hands over our hearts, we set an example for the next generation to regard the flag with great esteem. We not only honor the people who have died in battle, we also honor the people who are in war right now, fighting for our lives. We should also appreciate the men and women working in the police or firefighter department because they take the time to save American citizens from danger. We are to be obliged to our country, even if we dislike the president who is leading us. We must be grateful that we have freedom, unlike other countries. If you disrespect the flag, it's not the flag you are disrespecting, it's everything that it represents. Just because you have the free will to do anything you want doesn't mean you shouldn't make bad choices. We must thank the veterans who have fought in all the foreign wars. They have died or suffered for us. Many times, our country has stepped up to help other countries defend themselves when they are disparate. I greatly respect all the men and women who volunteered, knowing their life was at risk, step up to help our country and other countries fight for peace. Our country has made some bad choices, but all the good that we do overpower the bad. Our country has fought wicked people for years, and our soldiers are still fighting. They are risking their lives for us. I am thankful for my freedom, and that's why I respectfully honor the American flag.
All right. Thank you, Rose. Our next essay, our next Valentine's to all the vets and all of us, is Lee, Kayden Lee.
I'm in seventh grade. I'm in Rose's class. Why I Honor the American Flag. The American flag is the pride of our country and the symbol of the land we love and believe in. Not only does this flag represent America, it represents our freedom to live our lives in the pursuit of happiness as we see fit. It represents our unity as a country and as Americans. The flag reminds me of our liberty and of those who made the ultimate sacrifice by fighting and giving their lives to make the America we live in a safe, fair, and free nation. It is a symbol that our country rallies behind in the midst of war and during difficult times, whether on our land or on foreign land. When I look at the American flag, I think of America's strength in its military, economics, cities, and more. The flag acts as a symbol of pride for our free nation, our dignity as Americans, and our resilience to people or things that threaten our home. The flag also reminds me of the hard-fought battles Americas was willing to fight for the good of our nation. The 13 stripes represent the 13 colonies that fought for America's freedom in the Revolutionary War. The 50 stars represent the 50 states. The blue symbolizes vigilance, the red valor, and the white innocence and purity. To me, the flag is home. I honor the flag to show my respect for my nation and how it unites us. It was built from the ground up by pioneers who had a vision. That vision was for a land that is democratic and allows its citizens freedom. So many brave people have made the ultimate sacrifice to create this great nation. I love my life here in America, and that's why I honor my flag. I feel it is very important to treat our flag with care and respect, as it is a remembrance of our history, our people, our pride, our freedom, and of our home.
Wow.
Kayden, thank you, Kayden. Now, you remember I told you something about the district competition? This next young lady that wrote her essay, her essay made the finals in district competition. She won fifth place.
Oh, wow.
Ms. Sin Coyle, please come forth.
I go to St. Matthew's School, and I'm in eighth grade. I came to America in 2009, and I'm from Myanmar, and I was born in the village of Tuichiang in the Chikka Township. And tonight, I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to read this, and I'd like to thank Mr. Vargas for standing beside me through all this, and for my family for coming here with me. Why I Honor the American Flag. Since I was little, when I saw an American flag, I would always pause for a brief moment. In our country, there were courageous people that have risked their lives for it. If we are defined by those who love us, America's flag emblem would be our veterans. The flag does not only represent the United States, but also represents the people that kept it standing. Each one of our lives has been stitched together to form the American flag. Throughout the years, the flag has been a symbolic language. Everything the United States stands for is expressed in its flag. To me, the stars on the flag represent the stars in heaven. Likewise, the color of the stars are like the innocent lives lost. White stands for innocence and tells new beginnings in our life. Though we had times of turmoil in our country, we have made new chapters to begin again, so I honor the flag for showing me that. Similarly, red displays the deeds and sufferings of our country. Veterans are the ones who willingly made sacrifices and defended our country to secure our wills. No matter the color of their skins, they all pled red for us. Sincerely, I thank the veterans who made the supreme sacrifice with acts of valor to ensure our safety. When I look at the blue background of the stars, I'm reminded of the sky. To me, it seems the sky wasn't just a space that held the sun and moon, but rather a place of remembrance for veterans. As a child, I often reminisce of the time when I saw a veteran at a parade. He held the flag proudly and confidently. Ever so often, I could see the way his eyes glanced up at the blue sky. It seemed like he held the flag tighter each time, as if he could see his comrades, and would never let it go, let go of the flag. Since then, every time I see the flag waving in the sky, my heart swells with veneration. In the end, it is up to those who are living to carry on their unfinished mission. While doing so, we should think of the sacrifices we can make to honor our flags as veterans have made for our country.
Thank you, Sin. Oh, my goodness, once again, thank you for having us. Before we leave, let me encourage one thing, as long as people are gonna watch this, encourage all sixth, seventh, and eighth graders to take part in this program. It's a beautiful one to write a nice essay of what it says in your heart. Next year's, or this coming year's, 2019 and '20, the theme topic to write your essay on is, "What Makes America Great." A 300-to-400-word essay. Looking forward to that. Thank you again for having us, and God bless you all.
Thank you. Thank you so very much.
Kayden and Sin, anything you'd like to say to the board?
Great job. Would you also let us know, please, the dates and everything, and where they could send essays, so that if anybody, because that's open to all the students and all the schools, right?
Yes, you don't have to be in school. It's the ages that equal sixth and seventh and eighth grade. The schools really don't run it. The schools participate and help us. You know, it's not a school program.
Right.
The school helps us issue it out to the kids.
Wonderful.
At least St. Matthew's does.
Thank you. Thank you for honoring our veterans. You guys did a fantastic job. And thank you to our veterans that are here and out there somewhere.
Yeah, that's right.
Great job. Thank you. I need a motion to call for a recess to, recess to executive session to discuss deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5ILC 120/2C2. I know you're gonna tell me it's different.
It's the right section, just collective bargaining negotiations.
And collective bargaining negotiations pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5ILCS 120/2C2.
You got it, man. So moved.
Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second.
Um, rope up.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
We are taking a very short recess to go into executive. We are taking a very short recess to go into executive session, and we will be right back. Thank you. I'd like to call this village board meeting back to order. No action was taken in executive session. We are now at public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on either an agenda item or any item, since we do not have a committee of the whole tonight, please step Being known, you have the consent agenda before you. Trustee Sullivan.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Roll call vote. Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. We now go to new business. Since there is no old business, new business number one is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a collective bargaining agreement regarding patrol officers. This would be resolution number 2019-R-13. Trustee Maritato.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt. Resolution number 2019-R-13 is approved. Now we are back to public discussion of agenda items or anything else. Seeing as there is nobody here, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Can I say something?
Can you say something? No. Yes.
I got a question for Jolanda, the chief. The state is considering this marijuana legal, legalize it. Do we have locations where we can put these? I mean, if they legalize it, or they can go anywhere they want, any storefront?
No. They have to be in industrial, zoned industrial.
Okay, that's under the ordinance, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's under state law.
Wasn't sure.
I mean, under medical, the law for legalization of marijuana isn't written yet. It's just proposed. Under the medical marijuana, they can only be in zoned industrial areas.
Okay, but if they legalize it, I mean, could we still enforce, enforce that ordinance?
It's gonna depend on what the statute says.
Yep.
Yeah. They may preempt the local communities from passing any regulations inconsistent with what the state law says. So you just have to wait, as the chief has said, you have to wait until you see the statute.
Hmm, okay, thank you. I was just curious, because that's gonna, it's gonna happen.
Yeah, the state's gonna regulate who gets what licenses. They might allow Home Rule to make different rules, and they might exempt, make, say Home Rule can't say where they go.
Hmm, okay, thank you.
I'm gonna bite my tongue right now. A motion to adjourn, we have. I can't help but, trustee Sullivan.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.